Thank you. Good evening. This is the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And my name is Ann Govan on the chair. And I'd like to take a moment to explain our format. Our meeting is recorded in Zoom, so there's people online as well as people in the room. And when we do a public hearing, we make sure the documents that we've received are put in the record. We briefly describe what we're putting in the record. The applicant presents their application to us. The commission will ask questions. And then we will open the floor to members of the public to either speak in support or opposition to the application. When you come forward to speak, it's very important that you state your name clearly so that our clerk can get it for the record. After everybody has spoken and we feel our questions have been answered, we may choose to close the public hearing. And then we don't vote on the application necessarily immediately. We do that within our meeting, not within the public hearing. And we can, if we don't have everything we need from staff, we can opt to make our decision at a following. If you don't sit through the whole meeting, you're welcome to call the town staff and ask them where we left it. The planning and development department is at 860-623-6030. Basically, what the commission can do with an application, once it's submitted, is we can approve it with conditions and for modifications. We can table the action to a future meeting. And in rare cases, we could deny the application. It takes three affirmative votes of the commission to approve an application. That's basically our process. And since we have new people in the audience, I wanted to make sure you were aware of how tonight would work. So this point, we are opening our meeting. It is meeting number 1816. And it's, as I said, it's here both physically in town hall and it's on Zoom. We have a forum tonight. We have four regular members. And Dave, you'll be acting as a regular voting member tonight.
Okay.
Great. There are added agenda items. We have received an application for a special use permit for 148 North Road, Unit 1. It's a dog grooming business, which we should add to the agenda under receipt of applications. And we have a suggestion from Ruth Ann that under other business, we should add the Aqua Protection Rights and our compliance status. So I would propose to make those two additions to the agenda if that's acceptable.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we add two agenda items, a receipt of a new application for 148 North Road under receipt of application. And under other business, we will discuss the Aqua Foam regulations.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous, so our agenda has been revised. Under legal notices. Do we have any legal notices? We have the one for the hearing and we'll put that on the record as part of the hearing, so that it's on the hearing record. Under, our next item is public participation. Is there something that a member of the audience would like us to put on the agenda? It's not on the agenda? Or is there something you would like to discuss? Okay. No added agenda? Both is the person who votes. They're seeking to speak. There's one on. Would any of the Zoom participants like to speak on their public participation about something not currently on the agenda? Okay, then we will move to approval of minutes. We have the minutes from regular meeting 1815, which was November 23rd, '21. Are there any suggested edits to the minutes or are people satisfied? There's. Okay, a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of meeting number 1815, November 23rd, '21.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Next will be receipt of applications. We have received two applications. The first one is the first one is for creating a subdivision of 16 lots. It is at South Road and Phelps. It's properties that it's town land with houses on it. And basically, it's seeking to take the town out of the position of landlord and grant the land to homeowners as individual lots instead of a shared parcel. And that will be heard at a future meeting. The second application we received is for 148 North Road, Unit 1. It's a special use permit for retail pet supply store with selling.
Hello, Cindy.
And again, that will be heard at a future meeting.
Cindy.
Do we have anything under performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, or road acceptance? Do we have any continued public hearings? Okay, then our next order of business is to open the public hearing. The applicant is the Town of East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. And it's to propose the text amendment to Chapter 8, Section 813, which would be new. It's for cannabis establishments. And it's to enact zoning regulations to establish requirements for the responsible and equitable regulation of adult-use cannabis per Public Act 21-1. There's a legal notice at Brandon, the Journal Inquirer, November 30th and December 7th, 2021. That notice reads, "The East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Consider the following applications. Details regarding the meeting location will be published on the commission's agenda and available on the town's website." And the applicant is East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a text amendment application under Chapter 8, Section 813. It will create a new section called Cannabis Establishments. And it will enact zoning regulations to, for requirements for the responsible and equitable regulation of adult-use cannabis. A full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage on the town website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments to the board regarding this application. We have a memo on the record from Ruth Ann Calabresi, our town planner. It's dated October 21, 2021 and was revised 10/27/21. And it summarizes the regulation and lays out the language being considered. And we have a zoning referral from, response from CROG. And basically, we submitted it to them and they, they received it. And their comment is, "The staff of the Regional Planning Commission of the Capital Region Council of Governments has reviewed this zoning referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns." That's all we have submitted for the record. So Ruth Ann, I will turn it over to you to describe the application. Okay. As mentioned, this is a new section in a response to Public Act 2021-1. Our attempt to be able to use thoughtful consideration for those wishing to enter into the cannabis market, whether through cultivation or production, retail, or delivery. What's that issue us from a planning and zoning perspective is the appropriate location and controls, but also the fact that the state has put a cap on the number of retail establishments and micro cultivation establishments allowed based on population. So we get one of each of those. And to further, kind of for logistics sake, there's an issue. We're only allowed to issue an approval for one of each because that's the quota. The approvals need to be part of a final application package for a license by, issued by the Department of Consumer Protection. So that's kind of addressed in here with what we'd like to see in our own application package. It's a provisional license given to the applicant by the state prior to coming to us for an application for a location approval. It's, it's a step process and I think that works for us to protect us against giving out our one and only application for each and then having the individuals either not pursue or not be licensed. So that's one of the angles there. I could go through kind of our, our definition section, marriage, the Public Act, and defines cannabis establishments as nonprofit persons or business entity otherwise engaged in the act. If you define as a producer, a dispensary facility, cultivator, a micro cultivator, retailer, hybrid retailer, food and beverage manufacturer, product manufacturer, contractor, transporter, and delivery service. All ours, all our definitions come directly from the act for all those I under. Do we have spare copies for the people in the audience if they would like to see? Oh, thank you for that. Yes, we've run out. Yeah. The both need copies of the draft regulation. Oh, you got one coming? Looks like someone's in the, in the, something I got. I just wanted to make sure the people here had access. I wanted to say though. So there's a table that summarizes what we would be requiring as far as special use permits by zone in town. So we're looking for retailers, hybrid retailers, which are the dispensaries that are for medical purposes and recreational together than the hybrid retailers. Cultivators, that's another word for saying growers. And these micro cultivators are smaller grower. You have those in the D1, D2. Retail is excluded from the M1. And then in the TZ5 and B3, they're allowed with conditions noted. We're looking for where those notes are, Note 1 along Route 5 and 140. And Note 2 is having cultivation within existing building on partial freedom and private favors. And that was kind of a, as we worked through the regulations, initially, we thought cultivation would only be in the M1 zone. And we were looking for a way to have that be allowed in more places in town. On that last page is the details of requiring. So for retailers, we're kind of mirroring what it would be to have a liquor store. So not within 500 feet of any public or private school, child daycare facility, park, playground, or church. Hours of operation limited to no earlier than 7:00 AM or later than 9:00 PM. No consumption of any cannabis products that take place on site. And then for applications, an application for retail cannabis establishment shall include a provisional license for a cannabis retail establishment issued by the Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection. An operational plan to indicate a minimum of how the facility will be managed related to hours of cooperation, security, and access, installed signage, and odor monitoring mitigation. For cultivators, the following criteria is what we're looking for. That we conducted within a building, limited retail may be allowed in accordance with state licensing. There is a provision that micro cultivators can sell what they grow on the premises. State-issued cannabis cultivator license will be filed with the town clerk. And applications shall include a provisional license for cannabis cultivation or micro cultivation issued by the Department of Consumer Services. Those protections, excuse me. An operating plan, same as above, hours of operations, security and access, and spelled signage, odor monitoring mitigation. And then we recognize that there could be accessory co-located uses such as once you harvest your crop, maybe you're going to make edible products or beverages or repackage for selling the flowers for smoking and whatnot. So those all have separate licenses issued by the state. And so we would, if additional licenses are issued, we'd like to see those applications come back for modification.
Ruth Ann, I have a question.
Sure.
I was talking to an owner of a liquor store in Massachusetts. And I believe he said, oh, I know what he said. He said that they're trying to sell marijuana, cannabis through the package stores. Is that in the works here?
Not that I'm aware of. You'd have to get licensed to be a retailer. So I
Based on size, we're limited to one retailer in the town, so there won't be one, unless they would be able to do that.
And the, the state is going to revisit the cap. And I think the intention is to let the market develop first and see how things go rather than Are there other questions from the commission? My only question is on your 813.31, the cannabis retailer. You have a 2D odor monitoring mitigation. Clearly, if it was a cultivator or a processor, I would think the odor mitigation and monitoring is important. If it was a retailer selling nothing but a prepackaged product, you know, I think of like gummy bears in a bag, I wouldn't think it would be voted. Because it's maybe open-ended and you could do retail plus more. Is that thinking on having odor monitoring and mitigation for retailers? I can tell you, I haven't been in a retail location with a wheelchair. You can smell. Oh, you can, okay. Time I went in one Seattle, I didn't smell anything. Your mother would know when you get home. Just from walking through the store. Okay. It's like going to the donut shop. You know, you walk out, you smell like donuts. Commission's questions are answered. I will open it to the public in the room first. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this, either in favor, opposed, or wanted to suggest modifications or provisions? Could you, you know, and identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm happy to come up to the podium as well.
Okay, great.
Evening commissioners, for the record, my name is Dan Glishman. I'm an attorney with McDermott Reynolds and Glishman. And I've been practicing in the cannabis space for the last seven or eight years. My office prepared some brief comments for the commission's consideration in connection with this proposed zoning amendment. But just by the way of background, again, as I said, I'm an attorney. I've been practicing almost exclusively in the cannabis space for several years now, primarily in Massachusetts. Over the last couple of years, however, I moved back to Connecticut about three years ago. I live now in South Windsor. And I've been paying pretty close attention to the cannabis legislation as it has flowed through the state house and now is making its way to actually becoming a new industry here in Connecticut. So, you know, very close to the topics here that you guys were all just discussing, including the comment as it relates to liquor stores in Massachusetts. They are not getting cannabis anytime soon and neither will Connecticut be for the reasons that, that were mentioned already. But as I mentioned before, we did propose a couple of friendly amendments, minor comments to the bylaws here. And I'll provide just a brief overview of what, what I wrote in the memo there. First, we would recommend that the commission consider only requiring the receipt of a provisional license from the Department of Consumer Protection for the retail and micro cultivator licenses only. Those are the two license types that are capped at, you know, a ratio of license per person, one per 25,000 people. The rest of the licenses, however, aren't, aren't capped at the state level, nor are they proposed to be capped here at the local level. And one of the recommendations that we're making to our clients is to get ahead of local licensing and permitting as best they can. There are some very real timelines in the state legislation, which require you to be essentially operational in 14 months of receiving that provisional license. And so for a cultivation establishment particularly, but for any establishment really, that's a, that's a short timeline when you take into consideration local permitting, then building, you know, obviously raising capital and the like, and then getting to an operational perspective. So to the extent that folks can start early, we certainly recommend it. And that would not be possible if you require receipt of a provisional license, but it would if, if you could come in, you know, next week and put an application in for a cultivator or one of the various product manufacturing types. The other recommendation is minor, but just a point of clarification. The footnote to table, the table of use, footnote two to the table of use amendment references existing buildings for use by cultivators. And we just want to, we would just recommend making it clear that it just needs to be an indoor cultivation facility. Existing buildings could potentially be construed as only allowing folks to use a building that's already there, that you have to retrofit as opposed to, you know, a vacant lands proposal or a scenario where you might have to knock a building down and rebuild it from the ground up. And then one point of reference that I don't have in my memo, but I was just reviewing as Ruth, Ruth was going through the definitions here. I think that Ruth, I'd be happy to send you some of the definitions from the statute. Cannabis establishments are not nonprofits. They can be for-profit establishments, so I would recommend that change. And then with respect to the micro cultivators, again, as a point of clarification, the reason that they are included in that license cap is because they're allowed to deliver directly to consumers. They can, they can't sell out of their storefront like a retail operator could, but they do. They are one of the license types that's allowed to deliver directly to consumers. So my understanding is that the legislators kind of assumed that was a similar enough use to retail. So they wanted to similarly cap it at the ratio, resident ratio. So with that, I thank you all for hosting this meeting tonight and happy to answer any questions if the commissioners have, have any advice. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Anybody else in the audience?
Alan Baker, Ry Street. I, I just had a same concern that the attorney brought up with the existing building. But it seemed like it was really pointing it to only an existing building. I thought that was kind of confusing. We definitely wanted to leave it vacant land or whatever.
Anyone else in the room wants to talk to this? Yep.
JR, CJR Russo, Showham Road, actually here with a client, Eric Splungen and his son. Developed a number of properties on Route 5 and Prospect Hill Road. Actually has some property available, somebody interested in this particular regulation that you're currently proposing. So he asked me to come tonight and take a look at it. And I have kind of been following it to some extent as you were going through it. I was at some of the meetings early on when we were talking about it. But just a couple of, I guess, questions or comments in, in looking at it. And Ruth Ann actually mentioned earlier on, and she was describing it, that in some ways, this is a kind of a draft that follows your liquor or alcohol regulations that are currently in place. And I took a look at that. And it does to some extent, but there's a couple of differences. When I looked through it, I was just really kind of questioning in my mind why it might be different. And the first one is in terms of looking at it in Section 813.3, where you're allowed by special permanent, with solid zones in town. And it's excluding it from the highway interchange zone, which when you go to your alcohol section, it is included in the highway interchange zone. So I was wondering why that was done, what the difference was there, what the thinking was of the commission. So I was wondering why that was done, what the difference was there, what the thinking was of the commission. That was one thing that came up. And obviously Eric happens to own some property that has a site available in the highway interchange zone, which is the area where Wendy's is and the KFC store and the bank. There's a pad site available there that he's been trying to market for a number of years now. It seems to fit it rather well, but excluding that, so obviously would not be possible. The other area that I looked at when I was looking at the existing regulations and again, looking under the eight oh five alcohol sales. And there's the section in there that talks about limiting alcohol sales within certain areas. If it's within 500 feet of a public school, a private school, daycare. And I know that's been in your regulations for a long, long time and it's in most town regulations. But in this particular case, when we look at what's being proposed for the cannabis, it's it's actually a little different because it lists daycare, it lists schools, public and private, parks, playgrounds, but it lists churches. And which didn't really surprise me at first until I went and looked at the alcohol regulation and it doesn't say churches. Many towns do, and I thought East Windsor did, but apparently it doesn't. This church is not listed, but yet we list it here. So that was just a question, I guess, as to why it might be different than in alcohol. Because in my eyes, maybe I'm totally wrong and I could be. I don't see a whole lot of difference between this cannabis regulation and alcohol in terms of how it's regulated from from the state level. Maybe with the attorney here, he could probably tell me that I am wrong or it is different. But in my simple mind, it's very similar. And so wondered why there might be a difference when you start looking at 500 feet from a church. They're not a church. Maybe there's a good reason. I just didn't know. I thought I would break up. And again, as I mentioned, the property that that Mr. Splungin has is next to what was a Renaissance, which is now a church. So it could affect it or maybe it doesn't affect it. And that goes into a little more detail with how we measure 500 feet. I'm not really sure how we measure 500 feet, except in the alcohol section. It says actually that it's the required minimum distance shall be determined by the two nearest main entrance points of both properties measured on the assessor's map. Well, I still don't know what that means. I could tell you what it means in Enfield. We did it there. They have a similar regulation. And it means you start at the front door and you walk out. You either go down the sidewalk or down the road and you walk down the road and down the sidewalk and walk in the front door of the other one. And that's how it's measured. It's a path of walking down either a sidewalk or road or driving road. In this particular case, it's not really clear how it's measured, so I wasn't sure. So that's, I guess, a question. So those were the things and I think just a quick look as I was going through, I said, well, let's look and see what alcohol says. Seems similar to me. Is it the same? Is it not the same? In terms of the use tables, as I said, alcohol is allowed in the interchange zone, not in the cannabis regulation. Other than that, it's it's very similar. So I guess just a question. Why maybe was it taken out of the highway interchange zone? On Route Five, it looks like they want to keep it to a state highway, which makes sense, 140 Route Five. And I wasn't sure why.
I have a question if I may ask you to turn. You don't know we're not paying anyway, so. Can you explain from what he's saying, just the difference between the alcohol and the cannabis? Is there that great a difference or is there no difference or what is the difference?
Well, there's there's certainly a difference. They're different. They're different uses. But they have in many states across the country and and I think here in Canada as well, sort of lumped the two liquor store to cannabis retail store uses as similar establishments. In fact, the Connecticut bill has a provision in there in the bill that says if you don't have zoning in place, you have to treat these establishments as similar to any other use. And they, you know, the governor's office and others have in fact intimated that they intended it to be similar to liquor stores. If you don't have zoning in place, you would treat an application for a cannabis retailer as similar to a liquor store. You know, frankly, the cannabis facilities themselves are significantly more secure. They have cameras everywhere. They obviously are only allowing folks 21 or older to get in. And so they just generally have a higher level of security than a liquor store is. And from the most, at least in my experience, mostly what we see is, you know, when they come into an area, they they benefit the area just as much as any other, you know, retail establishment.
Thank you.
And here are questions from the commission. Yes?
Yeah, this is a kind of a third, I just have a question on the eight thirteen dash three. Under, we have this schematic, it says the by the partial has direct frontage along Route Five or statement 140. Why does the frontage have to be picked with five? Just curious, because if somebody has a back lot off of Route Five, they're going to be excluded. It doesn't make sense to me. And then cultivation operations are within an existing building. That's already been addressed, but it says I'm partially graded in five acres. But if somebody has a three acre lot that's in an area that may be conducive for what they want to do, why should they be excluded? Why is it five acres? Why do we even have anything determining the size for the growing? So that would be my two concerns. Thank you.
Do we have anybody?
You put you wrote the five. Was there a reason you didn't say four or three or six?
Well, I think we started at ten.
Well, my reflection is the main reason of that was to try to provide some distance from that and any waters just because of the older possibilities and and to kind of provide a little bit of separation between.
Initially started in M one only.
Right.
And then we moved over and did a size restriction.
Discuss also how many parcels were available.
Yes. And I'd like to just, if I could, address the footnote number one pertains to just retailing, retail establishments? For having the frontage on 140.
Let's take Sophia's Plaza first, and not that there's anything going on. Take Sophia's Plaza where they have the storefronts up to five, but you got the back buildings. The same thing with Bass Hill Plaza. You got frontage and then you've got that one building depending on what they're going to do and how it's going to face. May not be facing 140. And then it may limit two areas in town of that your intent, that's fine. But if somebody wanted to do something out in no man's land in Rodbrook, they're excluded. It's the way I read it.
I guess, question I have from Dan is I assume in Sophia's Plaza and the Bass Hill Plaza, that is the frontages of the plaza, not of the door.
So they would they would be qualified. And again, I think it was a lot of the thought was based on traffic too. Those are the roads that could handle the traffic rather than having a lot of traffic or fewer residential neighborhood to try to get to someplace out, like you mentioned, out in the woods.
And got a DUI.
No, that's all my issue.
Maybe the part that's confusing for the woods, the route direct, I'm not sure what that would indirect frontage be.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
I mean, either you have frontage or you don't have frontage, I guess.
I would make it more sense if we just said access. You have access to these properties from Route Five or 140?
So you don't want to.
It would qualify either way. If you had the frontage, you could have it go a quarter mile back into the woods if you had it. It doesn't prevent it. If you have the frontage, so.
Well, access and frontage are necessarily the same thing. So someone could say, we've got a piece of property at the end of Show Road and we're going to get an easement from our neighbor, you know. Access is how you how you get there. Frontage is where the parcel. So we were trying to review the properties that would be eligible purely from not looking at the buildings because buildings change, the parcels that would be eligible. So I think we can remove the word direct if that's confusing. But I think that frontage makes it clear that we want people to access these sites from roads, which.
Not a regular.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the acreage one more time. The Board of Selectmen went to a combined retail and grow operation. It was 90,000 square feet, I believe it was, in a highly dense neighborhood. Probably denser than anything we have here. And there was no odor except for in one alleyway where they they had a chute that they dump all the all the old plant material into, you know, before it gets carted off to the dump or whatever. As soon as you walked out of that alleyway, you didn't smell anything. So I think the acreage as a buffer is probably not needed because they spend quite a bit of money scrubbing their air.
And that's important that they do that.
What town was that? Can I ask?
What's that?
What town was that?
East Hampton?
East Hampton. It's a factory building, both factory buildings.
And so the factory building complex has restaurants and art galleries and, you know, quite good going operation. And then right across the street is a dense neighborhood, quarter acre lots, multi families, single families, lots and lots and lots of people around and you couldn't smell it until, except where when you're standing next to the dumpster that kicks down all the stuff. You can smell it in that little area. Other than that, on the rest of the property, there was nothing. And that was 90,000 square feet, which is 90,000.
We have a number of people who joined us from Zoom. Do any of the people who are joining from Zoom want to speak to this public here?
Nobody is. And I could. Jay had asked about the church. And in my drafting of the regulations, I was looking at the public act at the same time. And it was pointing to the general statutes for restrictions on, you know, liquor and liquor control. And in there it does this church. And so that's where that's where that came.
Okay, is there anything else people want to say on the record?
Yes.
My question is, one of the points that Jay addressed was the zone. Why was the zone where my property excluded, one in a lot of liquor stores? And I think that's the thinking behind that.
Yes.
My name is Eric Splungin.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to? So it could be as simple as a conversation about how these these zones have to be landed. And it wasn't clear to us at the time, you know, where the underlying zone could prevail.
Yes, I thought we talked about there is an underlying zone to the H I Z. So that underlying zone allows it, so therefore it would be allowed.
Because that's how I.
The conversation I had earlier today left me with, we'll start with that because why wouldn't we want it?
Yeah, we would want it here, but I think we concluded that the underlying zone allows it, therefore it's allowed.
So you're saying that I can have my property on on Prospect Hill Road? Where in the rear lot where Wendy's and.
Well, no, one of the church. One of the previous.
Question of how we measure.
Question if it's a rear lot, does it have frontage?
One of our previous meetings, we discussed this H I C was that there are certain provisions or certain things that are allowed that would make the owner of a property want to land this. And one of the specific things that you actually came and spoke to us about was drive throughs. So I, if you landed the H I Z, I don't think you would want a drive through available in a cannabis retail establishment, obviously. So that's probably some of the other items that may go along with that.
That may happen.
May be questioned.
That could happen where they have drive through. Not.
That kind of goes against, that goes against the security levels that they're. Right.
But I suppose my my response to that is although I can do it, I'm not forced to do it. Therefore, I choose not to do it to accommodate a tenant who doesn't want that.
But in the reverse, if we don't want you to do it, we can't stop you from doing it. If we allow it in that zone.
Then it's in a lot of use.
Right.
Unless there's something else in the regulations that proposes it. Jay?
Thank you. Again, for the record, JR CJ Russo. And I do remember the discussions about the highway interchange zone, going back and looking at the underlying zone. And I think in many cases, especially when we get up at Bridge Street and 140, the underlying zones there were business zones, I think for the most part. However, and I I believe I'm correct here, I'm not positive. But in Eric Splungin's case, where we're looking at the parcel where we have the Wendy's and the bank and the KFC was a trucking terminal. And I think it was zone M, if I'm not mistaken, although I would have to go back and look. And I don't know. Fisher Goward, I'm sure remembers. It was, there was a truck terminal right at that. It definitely was. It was, when he purchased it, it was there. Granted, it was not operational as it's closed for many years, but that's what was there. And I'm guessing that it was so M. I think, which was helping year around, it's still not allowed.
You're right.
I believe so.
That's a long time.
Because it was a trucking terminal and now it's business, couldn't it easily be resolved the business there?
I mean, structurally, it's what it was written as a floating zone. But once it's landed, I think the process to change the zone would be no different than any other zone change. So I, you know, it's simple enough for us to figure out what the underlying zone was and just have that column in for H I Z rather than basically saying down the road, figure out what it was and go from there. So there was no purposeful exclusion of the H I Z. Because if you look at the zoning map, it's the H I F C. And we've talked about how we need to fix that, but.
So you're proposing to add under, in this chart, under eight, one, three point three, under the H I Z column, put special use permit under H I Z for retail and hybrid retail?
If that would, because that would seem to track with the underlying zone. Because what I'm looking at, like you're saying, surrounded by M more. When it gets to that parcel to the north, it goes to. So we could just, we could just basically do that research upfront so that it's reflected. But getting back to the point that was made by whoever, this parcel is is directly adjacent to a church.
Yeah, we still have the church question.
Well, it may be appropriate for the zone, you know, there may be years despite it can't happen on that parcel.
But then that comes into the, how do you measure the 500 feet question?
Well, I don't know how you, I suppose it's the way that we outline in Enfield. You know, we're measuring it from a building that doesn't exist, so I don't know how we could estimate that, but. Yeah. I suppose at this point, the commission felt like we should come up with a way to determine how we would measure 500 feet to not create a problem for them. You might just consider adjusting the 500 feet from churches, which is his original point.
Yep. Can I just, you said about if the underlying zone was previously an M one? Can I just, you said, about if the underlying zone was previously an M one? We're not allowing retail in M one.
But we're allowing in H I Z.
Right.
Then that fixes it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I think we're talking about doing. Okay, we're sticking that, how that, I agree, you know.
Yeah. And the drive-through is not my right, it's my special use permit, so whereas we do have. Correct. Determine if we want to drive through or not. It's my special use permit in the H I F C.
Anything else anyone wants to? Mention on this? Because if we close the hearing, we can't discuss it any further except with town staff. It looks like Jay first and then.
Thank you again, J R, J R C J R Russo, just I guess. You know, to go back and just talk a little bit more about the. Restriction in terms of location to some other uses and specifically the church. I guess. You know, there is somewhat of a definition in the alcohol section which talks about front door, the main front entrance, the main front entrance. And, and I'm just thinking that whatever that means, and we're not sure exactly what it means yet, but it should maybe be the same. So if that. Front entrance, the front entrance section that appears in the alcohol section, maybe should appear here as well, I'm thinking. And then someday down the road, we define what that actually means.
Entrance to the property or entrance to the structure?
Well, it says door, so I think it means structure. Yeah, in fact, I can read it to you here. Says the required minimum distance shall be determined by the two nearest. The two nearest main entrance points of both properties.
I mean, is that, is that.
That enters the low.
Linear distance, or is it walking or?
I think the two.
There's.
Pointers. Entrance points of both properties. So I think that, I think that means driveway to driveway.
I guess I wonder in this day and age.
I think this means. Number of feet.
Oh, it does.
And, and, and it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be around about, it could be, I think it'd be from direct point A to direct B, straight line.
The, the town, the town's accessory maps are only gonna parcels, they're not gonna have buildings.
That's correct, so it, so it must mean. Road to road, right, or driveway to driveway or entrance to entrance, I guess.
Was amended May of twenty twenty.
It was amended?
According to the regs.
Yeah.
You guys amended this in May twenty twenty.
Do you remember?
Never you're walking yet.
I, I guess, I, I wonder in this day and age if a church requirement is not in the statute for state regs.
Did it?
Does it matter?
Did it come up when you were talking about the gravel pits and the distance from entrance to entrance and that was modified, not that long ago? A mile to a half mile?
Oh, it's from districts from one gravel pit.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember, it was, it was entrance to entrance, you know.
As.
As the road went along, yes. Right. Because it's.
Right.
Right. It was driving distance.
So what if, what if, I mean, based on separating distances are complicated, particularly because if the, if the restricted use. Shows up second, the answer is no, but if the use we're trying to protect against shows up second, it doesn't matter, right? The church can show up next to the use and we don't care.
Right, yeah.
So, so it's, it's not a two-way street, but I think maybe what we could go to is. Uh, something along the lines of the most restrictive way to read it would be. The, uh, a use listed here should not, could not be located in the same building as a church or a daycare. So if you have a plaza, you're not gonna have a liquor store, a daycare, a church, and a cannabis retailer. Maybe we don't care about if the buildings are on separate parcels, because in theory it could be three hundred feet apart, but. Could be a five-minute drive based on where the parcels are.
If it had been a direct in butter, I think.
Well, that's what he's getting at, because he is a direct to butter, so even though as the crow flies, could be a few hundred feet. Uh, if you had to walk, you'd be wet, you'd be well over a thousand, I would guess, but they probably share. Uh, at least a couple hundred feet of actual rear or side yard in front. So, you know.
I guess I see the. Proximity being a problem with a high school. Um, was, yeah, I'm not sure they could.
Well, keep them playing outside. Yeah.
But I'm not sure, but that church does, I think, have.
I think those things are, it's kind of antiquated thinking anyway, it's like trying to make believe stuff doesn't exist. But it all does, and I think a lot of the people that go to that church are gonna go get their dummies right out of church.
Yeah. Yeah, they're incompatible.
Um, personally, I, I, I can't understand why churches remain in the, even in this whole discussion. I mean, you're not like. They're not like daycare where there's kids around or, you know.
Except didn't need approval.
Mostly churches are either on Saturday or Sunday, if you live in two hours. Can't be open on Sunday.
They're ruining daycare of the church, certainly. They. They do, right? Or it's a Catholic church with the school, a body to it. I, I think we just, we have to come up with a, a definition for distance and then it falls where it falls.
Or Bruce's concept, uh, we reduce the distance because the statute doesn't say five hundred, it just says.
Well, we should, we should follow the same as the liquor requirements.
Yeah.
So we should follow the same as liquor requirements and then just come up with a definition of how we measure it.
In our, is that incorrect? Or as a, or as a policy in the office, you know, it's the way we're going to measure five hundred feet is absent, put it in the memo on the office.
We're tweaking it, wouldn't hurt to put it in.
Yeah.
Just so that we're not having to figure out about cannabis like we are about alcohol. You know, I, I think that the only other thing, and I've not thought about this for how we regulate this issue, but when you're talking about. The proximity of different types of uses and how do you regulate? You know, you're, you're talking, you know, if we have a daycare, they're not gonna come, they're not gonna go over to anything, they're kids, don't use. So I guess maybe you have a high school. Well, you can prevent them from, if, if you have an adjacent property that's a high school or, or any type of other school. You can put up a fence, you can put up buffering, you can put up landscaping, I mean, there are things you can do to make it so that they want to interact with the property, they have to access it like everybody else, through a road or through a sidewalk. So you can pretend, if you have an idea of what you want to do.
Teen or whatever.
Right, and then it doesn't matter because they're eligible, they're doing something that's legal, but if you guys have concerns about people walking through the yard or this or that. You could potentially put to some type of a performance-based standard. Which says if they're within, they have to do fencing or buffering or this or that, or who knows, we can talk about it. It's just a matter of like, you know, where your comfort level is, or we come up with a measurement and.
And one more from the back.
In measuring distances from door to door, which is what Jay, especially we had the Google map and we didn't go out there with a survey or anything. It's about, it's like over thousands where that's thousands of feet, and furthermore, I know that the. User or I would be willing to put up a fence that would be accommodate the separation to give you comfort and I would have no problem with that.
And we're writing the reg, it has to apply to all of that.
I'm, I'm, I'd be willing to do, do it according to the regs, I, I, I'm just tossing out the fact that I think it's a reasonable request.
Okay, so it's. Seems to me we have some noodling to do with this based on the comments, so we probably shouldn't close the public hearing. So that when we have a revised. Noodle draft.
Do we need to summarize the areas that need to be still kind of gone over or? Well, one of them was.
So the right point is we're gonna address that part in comment number one, correct?
Right.
H I Z zone. The church distance, how do you measure five hundred feet? The existing building versus allowing a new build for a cultivator. And.
Size of the parcel, yep. One of the other things.
And the provision, and the provisional license requirement.
Anything else? We heard that we're going to. Take a crack at.
Will this now require another submission back to Prague after we make all these modifications?
We wrote.
Based on.
The number of changes?
Yeah.
Yeah. So. We won't be, because you have to make the changes.
Submit to Prague.
We're extending the public hearing if we want.
Of course.
How long is it?
They get thirty days, they were quick. For that, so I.
This is Dr. Over from me.
They get back to me November twelve.
I mean, two weeks.
But it seems to me with the holidays, we probably should extend the hearing to our first meeting in January. That makes sense.
Well, I would just.
You could have been open with comments.
And then, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda once we're ready, I guess.
Yep.
It all depends on what the regional, I mean, commission. So if we get it in and they have them and we could get comments back, you know. They just threw it to the staff because they've already reviewed it, so if we push it and we get it right away, you don't have to wait in that full time. We just, we just can't.
In our motion, we don't want to specify.
Like the one.
I would just say.
Okay.
Well, I guess with that, I'll, I'll make the motion that we continue the public hearing uh until a future meeting.
Is there? Sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I got it.
Okay. So we'll see a new draft from the staff and get more input from the process. Everybody who came out to give us feedback, very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well.
Hold on, is this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The review of this, and discussion of the planned merchant development.
So last meeting, we reviewed sort of the approach, and I should, it was too time to sort of outline what would happen. Based on the application types, so this is the proposed draft. Um, I actually have refined a couple of things, just. More changes and edits and capital, nothing. Yep, and uh, so there was also a, a question that Anne had brought up related to um. Electric vehicles and basically what I did was, you'll see in yellow. Um, she had asked for some guidance from, from a colleague at the state, so we're, we're waiting here back on that, but. Just to sort of provide some structure for him to fill out, I, I added on to that. So that it's entering there and will be included in the design requirements. It doesn't get into. All the nuts and bolts, because, yeah, it's something that, I mean, from that perspective, it's evolving, right, of the E D stuff. Who knows, you know, in a year and a half, what's.
By the least, it forces the discussion to date, which was the intent.
Yeah, so this is the proposed language. Um, and certainly if you have questions about any of the sections, I mean, it's, it's, it's media, it's eleven pages, so I don't think we want to go through each section. But um, it outlines the, basically the process, it outlines the eligibility. It outlines the various requirements based on which type of approval, and I understand that it's a little. Complicated because, like you said, we have two different paths to get to the same place. But. The takeaway is the end of the day, the, at the, at the end will be the same. You will have gone through his own chain, you will have gone through a public hearing, you have gone through a plan review, it's just a matter of when. Um, so there's no process that changes when the, you know, the fact public can't be involved or all of those things. It's just a little bit, uh, kind of, again, looking at it on its head. You'll see that I've listed the permitted uses. That again would be eligible to um be within one of these districts, so. And we don't want everybody to commit under this, under this zone, we don't want all this thing used, we really want this to be targeted development of key parcels. Right. So there may be certain things in there which you decide during public hearing we remove or add, but I think generally speaking. These are the big ones. And there's also a, again, site consideration, because we want them to design as well. Um, we want to include. A nod to, to lead developments, the U S Supreme Building Council lead certification is essentially very efficient buildings. So we're providing them with incentive by saying that they can have an increase in five percent of impervious coverage. If they're going to the lead building. And then we're talking about low-impact development, which is related to stormwater, so they're, they're cleaning and treating the. Or the property rather than just connecting a pipe to the state or the town's, you know, um, stormwater system and sending it to be someone else's problem. We leaned in a little bit more heavily on the site lighting again to talk about layer and light trespass and beyond just Shelby full cutoff. And. Then made it pretty clear to what would be required for modification, what could be modified, what not be modified, so that. Change, we knew exactly what we could approve and can't be approved. Um, as they, you know, some of these developments are on the larger side, we want to make sure that. The little stuff can be swapped out without too much of, you know, of a regulatory burden, but larger changes have to come before the commission. So. You have questions? The next step would obviously goes to Prague, three, five days, open hearing, and then we really start.
Yeah, I think you've done a really good job.
Uh, one of the other things that I think is important to just kind of point out is um. Look, where it says additional materials, it's things that can be requested. You know, can be provided or requested by you, so traffic studies, obviously, impact analysis, everything that happens in there is a municipal fiscal impact analysis. Prepared by qualified professionals, some towns have this. And this is where we can quantify what the implication will be from a tax perspective. What does the data show related to, are we really gonna have hundreds of new kids? We've talked about these ones are not really having that problem, but that's what a lot of people talk about.
Yep.
A lot of people talk about traffic, but we also want to know what would be the fiscal impacted tax. Is this gonna generate, you know, three, four, right? So this is something that you, this, this kind of puts you guys in position of being able to specifically ask for that. Um, are, is there gonna be some unanticipated consequence with the town's gonna have to buy a fire truck? You know, the town's gonna have to buy a new, who knows what, a specific vehicle to maintain some infrastructure, I, you know, I don't know. But this allows us to ask some of those questions so that the long-term effects of this site can really, yeah. Um, and that's not something that really is, is included elsewhere in our regs. So I want to.
Are people generally comfortable with where we are?
Yeah.
Yeah. People are generally comfortable, so.
I say send it.
Yeah.
Okay. So what we'll do is, I don't know, work with the timing, I mean, we want to give your colleague a couple of days to see if there's any thoughts.
Just give it till the end of the weekend, if you don't hear anything from him, go. Because I think what you've done satisfies me, I would look for something specific and what you've done.
Okay.
Will work. It may come up. It may come off, you know, twenty paintings of way too much. So.
Yeah. That's true.
Yeah.
So on other business.
Protection.
Protection, yes. I have to say, I had to be quarantined for ten days, like, I got my eight hours of aquifer protection training in. But at the same time, I had received correspondence from the Connecticut Water Company. Regarding our compliance status with the aquifer protection regulations and where we span. I assume they're worried because they have wells. They do have wells in town, and they. Aquifer is in the Broadbrook area. And the town has completed this aquifer mapping, it is on our GIS, we can overlay it. To see if you're in or you're out of the aquifer. We have aquifer protection regulations which appear to be really. Older than, right, that the state may have written, it's not a user-friendly regulation. One of her primary asks is to do a land use survey to identify parcels that may be high-risk. That's one of the things that has not been done, not registered. Users that have been grandfathered in, and still can be grandfathered in, because as far as the state is concerned, they know who's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And if the town starts, they're not going to enforce. There is, we had deadlines as a municipality. A lot of dudes were trying to register potential. High-risk users so that they could be grandfathered in to get permitted. And so.
I think a lot of them, they said a high cost to town to allow them to do this.
There is, I Google Earth, it's awesome, because it labels all sorts of businesses.
Is it just the business, or is it like an underground fuel tank that wasn't?
So the things, I mean, that's one. It's kind of being, I'm having all college internship flashbacks.
You'll catch me.
Yeah. So there's uses that come to mind. That we know about, like the gravel pits, the fertilizer locations, shooting windows, that kind of stuff. History, we talked with Fire Department about, you know, brush fires and where much they have huge fire fighting suppressors, oh, and stuff. No fire comes up, comes to moving. Agriculture, you know, where. Oh, yeah, right, agriculture, so.
And then all PTC site, that's inside the agricultural potential.
Um, so I'll be working with her to put forward or identify potentially high-risk uses of that.
And what we have to do with them.
Well.
Besides make a list.
We're going to have to read out to them to get them. If there's requirements and the state. Steps to take, so. I wanted to alert folks, this woman who's the compliance. Warden here for the Connecticut Water Company has offered to come to the workshop for the commission. You know, maybe one of our business sessions she could come.
I have a question. Obviously, we have a lot of EDB in town, and it's been litigated through the state, to state, to the town, to the individuals. Now, a lot of the wells, which I have, have, have EDB. But because over the years it's gone down, does the town, or do you have any records or statistics of how many people are on, on the filtration system? And how many have decreased, how much has it decreased?
Well, yeah, yeah. They would, yeah, and I think there's stuff online, too, because they have, they are required to submit orderings. Because while I was like researching the things I had come across.
Some of them, some of them.
And have you gone and do them?
Their filtration off.
Yeah, I'm not what they're done, so I have to research that.
Yeah, they changed the, the lower limit, upper limit, so they didn't qualify anymore.
Right.
But the state.
We need to improve the condition, we just changed the standard.
The state, yeah, the state changed.
Yeah.
It's because they were sick of putting those, versus most of the systems.
Is that what you were doing?
Yeah. And so we had all that information kicking around a while ago, it's probably gone from our records now, but the state keeps that record, that information. And they know, and you can get that, we did at the time, but you bring this up at a good time, because tomorrow at twelve thirty. I think it's a Facebook event, but there's, they're, they're discussing in our district well water contamination. With an eye towards Luke something about it.
It seems to me there's so many risky uses. I mean, you don't know that someone in their backyard hasn't poured oil, turpentine on their yard, I mean, it's.
I mean.
A lot of chemicals that you spray on your plants, you know, it's like.
There's, it's everywhere.
It's everywhere, it's everywhere.
Yeah, in fact.
It seems like a huge energy.
Right, and I don't think it's going to get so granular, I mean, the state has its, has waste site list. But this will be more use-driven, and so from here on out, if there's an application that comes forward that's within the aquifer protection area. The Connecticut Water Company. Just like all the other stakeholders. And they can weigh in on what their concerns are, because even if something doesn't require permanent, it may have uses within its walls that are of concern. So they may want to talk to those folks about best.
So is that now going to become a base stamp in your office, that then an application after verified? It's in a lot of the application protection.
Yes. The sort of, in the round of wet runs.
So we have the list already of the parcels?
All the parts of them.
Yeah.
Well, we can do it, because you showed me one today, we could trace the outline of the aquifer.
Yeah, and, and I would say Rebecca can probably get us that extract from GIS. If she can pull the assessors data based on the use, we can probably filter it out pretty quickly as a starting point. I mean, it's pretty big, there's some big parcels, so.
Yeah, while I was telling others, the word.
So this class that she wants to come. That actually. Continuing in the vision.
You know, I kind of have the same question, I was talking to Mike about this, it's something on the budget. They haven't actually defined.
What?
How that's going to be defined as qualified. Because there's other things, too, you can clear heads online classes that are free and can go over, really, and listen to them. They weren't that good. The two-way protection were really good, so.
The finals.
Right, they're older than. But I think it would be worthwhile to have them coming.
Oh, I'm sure there's, there's.
Maintaining communication, it's good to know.
You know, you're thinking of, you know, obviously, the, you know, the industrial or auto body shop or something like that, but there's probably other things.
Oh, yeah.
I guess, you know, just putting fertilizer on your lawn and stuff.
The dry cleaners, the nail salon.
You know, seeing how, how it's, how it's going to apply to your home.
Oh, yeah, but. All around tanks people want to take out.
Well, not even, I don't know, you have plenty of houses here that have external tanks, with no secondary.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I mean, you know, tanks sitting right outside.
They rust?
Yes.
Basement, well. No, oil. Yeah, I can see right here on Main Street.
I'm on all the propane and tobacco shit, when you're curing the tobacco.
And when they spray on that tobacco.
EDB was a kid.
Listen, I was a kid, in high school, you played with the mercury. It's like every night, the mercury cleaned up, it has my feelings. It's like, it's everywhere.
Early part of the year is pretty quiet, in February.
Yeah, okay. Anything under correspondence? The letter that came in from the. But that, um, okay, let's do the budget, because that's due. Yep. So I.
I learned on your analysis.
I did my analysis, I normalized it to ten hours. And I wanted to share with you something that Ted had also put together that lists the different permissions. And. No, it's another one. It's a table, but it's, it is different.
So there's different amounts, so it's not a big thing.
It's geared, yeah, it goes with the complexity of the meetings, I think. So, I mean, the, the research was definitely worthwhile, what I'm thinking about for. For me and putting my budget proposal together. Look at what I came up with after our neighbors.
What is going on in Windsor?
I was wondering the same. And so it's like through a law firm, they're paying a high price.
Oh, maybe. So it's the table that describes how these, they're either flat fees or flat fee that it's surcharge or more time or hourly fee. I thought it would make sense to make it all the same and just say, okay, at a ten-hour effort, what would you get paid across these?
And I gave a good, yeah, here's.
But it's. So it shows us as being low. And. So I got the average of one seventy-four, and I thought if I put my budget together at one seventy-five per meeting. I would ask for that, four thousand two hundred or something.
I would do that, and then I would do, I like what they've done in some of the towns where they, the meeting lasts more than three hours. There's an extra fee. Because that's more minutes, more time in the meeting, you know, that there's.
So we have a really long hearing. Yep. So you.
They're on a matter, and there'd be a poor amount, but if the meeting is outrageous, you should get extra.
Any suggestions for, like, does it, what it looks like if I were to put in for one seventy-five, is it two hundred, or is it?
I don't know.
And I just think of like when the casino was going on, and when there's something really eating up a lot of hours. And a lot of people speaking, and Ted does.
Two sixty.
The more hours, and the more work out.
Right, so you can't, there's the base amount, and then there's, it went too long, there's the surcharge.
So we want to go one seventy-five and then two sixty, is that everything?
Yeah.
They're going, they're going. Ducking down anyways.
But it's, you gotta, you gotta be fair to the people, it's like, and it's, we're not being fair.
Okay.
And have, well, I mean, I guess you can't put a provision, I'm just saying, if the town budget goes up four percent, should you go up with the town budget?
Yes. Everybody else?
Cost of living?
No increase since nineteen ninety, isn't there?
That was that one.
And then we're going to put something in the budget for training.
And so the require, we were thinking. I'm going to put in a hundred dollars per commissioner.
Do you know how much that, um, annual legal?
It's every other.
It's every other year.
It won't be till.
And how much do you know?
Well, I was talking to Ruth, they're gonna, it's usually less, but they're going to be exclusively virtual now, so you're not going to be at Wesley.
It was virtual when I did it, but it was a lot of hours and it was.
It's a full day, yeah.
Yeah.
Usually like eight to four is usually. It was about sixty bucks.
I don't know.
I think that's. Oh, not a third.
Oh, that's free.
Yeah, but the eight hour, the eight, the thirteen module, you know, it was free, the. But she, I know, she.
Oh, the CCFA.
Yes.
I don't know that. The Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Authorities is Stephen Byrne.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's the one.
Oh, we can have, okay, cover that, and the other one, so the hundred dollars covers both, that's fair. And if. It turns out works, there's some state mandate of what you have to do, then. That's our registration fee.
There's a CCFA membership fee per year, and then I guess the.
That's three hundred dollars.
But that comes out of your budget, or that comes out of the commission's budget?
I think it's based on a commission, right, you would join as the PCC or.
I think that's.
Yeah.
Underdue movies.
So then we need to add that.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? This is the FDA seminar, they were, one was Wesley.
Yes. The FDA is, is, that the organization is the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Authorities Association. And the Wesleyan one is the Connecticut Bar Lend.
Yeah, that was, was it?
The Connecticut Bar.
That one was online, but it was very well thought.
They usually fill up every year, they have it at Wesleyan, and like.
It was a nice review of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a couple, maybe four years ago, we started using their Connecticut Bar book as part of the CIO train. But the hope is that. Twenty twenty-three, when the continuing education and training for commissioners actually is, that that will be. That was one of the things that I, when we were talking back and forth with the state, I told someone, I was actually here. And it was someone from a statewide organization, partnership or something, or housing. And I said, why don't you just write the legislation so that this training qualifies? So that every two years, as long as the commission goes to that training, they know they qualify. Because it's, you know, if you have many commissions and many members, you'd have a hundred plus people with credits to try to manage. He said something like, I'm sorry, but someone's inability to count doesn't strike me as an excuse. And I said, well, you know, when you have twenty-five towns in the far reaches of Connecticut that have barely can get quorums, and they don't know if they've got certifications. I'm going to smile. You get eight hundred people to go to that Wesleyan train, I mean, that's the whole state goes there. That should be appropriate, so, anyway, end or end.
So you're going to put this together for us and transmit it to Jason. You know, executive session. And before we adjourn, I would like to thank Ted for all your service. I, we will miss you in the office. And. Thank you from everybody. And as far as the next meeting, it falls. We've got between Christmas and New Year's, and I'm thinking if we have a light or not much on the agenda, we probably should cancel that. And I'm thinking if we have a light or not much on the agenda, we probably should cancel that one.
Right? Thank you. So well, we accepted the application for the special use permit. So you would have to do it that week or can we push that to January? Do they need the applicants preference to do it?
Okay.
You're making a short meeting.
Jason, before we adjourn, is there anything you would like to say?
Well, thank you. I'm good.
Okay.
See, meetings are shorter when Jada's the top.
So then we are done for tonight. Motion to adjourn will be in order.
I made a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
That's the cookies. That's still not you on the record.
There we go. There we go. Oh, darn it. That's your bonus for fees. Thank you very much.
Read your name in the minutes.
Where are we going? Just my name down.